I opened the April meeting of the Auburn Planning Commission. We want to welcome everyone that's here, appreciate your interest in what is being done at the Planning Commission. Before we begin, let's ask the Secretary to call role.
Dana Camp.
Nonette Reese.
Here.
Robin Bridges.
Here.
Warren McCord.
Here.
Bob Rittenbach.
Here.
Wendy Birmingham. David Wisdom.
Here.
Joseph Eschip. Phil Chancellor.
Here.
We have six members, I will declare a quorum, I think under our guidelines, that's sufficient. And we will, before we open the meeting, I want to explain a little bit to those, if this is your first time here, haven't been to a planning commission in a while. Our way we normally deal with business is that the, we allow the staff, the staff presents to us the petition related to the land use decision that needs to be dealt with. The developer then following that, or the person proposing that development, gives an opportunity to get further information. After that, if it requires a public hearing and most zoning, all zoning changes and preliminary plats require a public hearing, we allow individuals to come forward and speak to that issue. And then after that, we will take it under advisement, taking all that information to include case law, Alabama law, and our own information that has been supplied to us by staff, related to good planning principles and the details. And we will make our decision, and most of our decisions, with the exception of subdivisions, are recommendations to the City Council. On all subdivisions, which is a technical review to ensure that subdivisions meet our regulations, our subdivision regulations also require a public hearing, but it is a very technical review. And we have very little latitude other than to approve if it meets the specifics of our ordinances. So with that, before we also start there, we also offer an opportunity for anyone who wants to address the Planning Commission about a planning issue that is not on the agenda. And I will open that opportunity right now, if there's anyone who wants to bring up a topic that's not on the agenda. We will deal with the agenda items at the time the agenda item comes up. Anyone? Yes?
Just clarification, because I was told that we could speak tonight from the neighborhood if we had an issue.
On, on the agenda item?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So I signed that, do I take?
And I assume it, it would require a public hearing, is what we.
Yes.
Do, yeah, if it's a subdivision.
Right.
Yes, yes.
So do I scratch off my name on?
No, no, you leave your name there, just come forward at the time, and, and, but we do need a record of your, of your visit for the, for the minutes.
Thank you.
Um, is there anyone else? If not, we will move to the business, the old business, there is no old business from previous meetings. We will then take up the consent agenda, which only has one item. So does anyone want to remove that from the consent agenda? If not, do I hear?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
The second, uh, the consent agenda, which is merely a final plat approval for an eight lot conventional subdivision, has been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. The next item on our agenda starts our new business, it's an annexation. But, oh, the minutes, yes, I'm sorry.
They were included on the consent.
Didn't include the minutes in that, in that consent agenda.
Included in our approval.
Say that out loud.
Uh, so the minutes for the March meeting, which have been disseminated by email.
Yes.
Is there any corrections, additions that need to be made? If not, I will.
Move to approve.
Most should be made approved and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the mo, and the minutes have been approved. Now we bring to the new business, which is an annexation, is the first item on the new business.
This is a request for a recommendation to City Council for annexation of 21.94 acres into the city limits. And before I get into my presentation, the same request came before the Planning Commission in October of 2022. The property is located at 484 Lee Road 25, which is also known as Hillendale Drive. The property is outside of the optimal boundary, which currently sits directly north of the subject property. Staff recommends denial based on the property being located outside of the optimal boundary.
Alright, thank you.
Thanks.
Can I ask a question for you? So is there any reason, anything that's changed from the original presentation of this item in October?
Uh, no. I'm, I don't know if the applicant has anything that has changed, and don't know why he's bringing it up again.
So what happened in October?
It was, did not, like, it was the same requests brought up.
And denied.
Denied, yes.
Pardon?
There is not a waiting period for annexation requests, unlike some other requests that you see.
Thank you.
Another tried, okay.
Right.
Alright, would the applicant wish to say anything regarding this, or representative? State your name and.
Uh, Luke Grankey. And I guess I didn't get a chance to address you guys last time, a scheduling conflict, that's why I wanted to come up here again. I guess the number one goal for me with, we got two kids, we're interested in getting into the city is, uh, is our biggest concern. But we do get some, some questions, I don't know if a lot of asked questions, um.
Yeah.
But I thought a good point made the other day was, you know, we're a single entry road surrounded by large landowners. There's really nowhere else to go outside of us. With that being said, too, I pulled up the 2030 comp plan, the original optimal boundary map. And I just so happened to notice the, the development that went on right next to us, which was, uh, Michael Allen built four homes. It appears to me that it was not in the optimal boundary, and then he brought it into the optimal boundary after he developed the homes. I was just curious the reason of that, and then it come, after, after he built those houses, that brought the optimal boundary to us, or onto us partially, which gave me some, um, reason to suspect we might have an opportunity to get in. Um, also, I noticed when I looked at the map, the original map drawing, and I just went a mile down the road, I noticed the new development of Chapel Heights. Um, it is not on the original map drawing, and that was brought in. Uh, I don't know exactly when that was brought in, but it's not on the original, but the updated map has, it's a very unique drawing of Chapel Heights, which is another development which was brought into the optimal boundary. I don't know if anybody's familiar when that was brought in, I was just informed of that as well. So I know that Michael Allen, being that he built those houses right next to us, I mean, that was 2020. And I got a map right here where the, where the hole is, right next to our property. But if you have the new map, it's filled in with the new optimal boundary that comes to us, which actually looks like it comes onto us some. I don't know how detailed the drawing, the optimal boundary line is, but it does seem like it spills onto our property. So I was just curious what the, what the guidelines are, if, if, if a little bit's on our property, is that considered being our property is in the optimal boundary, even if it's a small portion? Um, and then also, when I read the, the, the comp plan, basically, we, we check out for all of the guidelines being, uh, contiguous with the city. And it says that, uh, some of the, the considerations are, um, if we use a lot of resources, uh, if, if there's a lot of cost that comes to the city. And as far as I know, all the houses on the road are in the city, and all they get is trash service, we don't expect water service, we don't expect sewage. So I would consider that a minimal expense. Uh, and as it's outlined here, the optimal boundary should be used as a useful guide, which to me lends some leeway on a judgment call. So, um, I just wanted to bring those things forward. Just, it seems like our neighbor was brought in, so Michael Allen's homes could be brought in the optimal boundary, right up to ours. Add in Chapel Heights, and then we're not asking for many services, we're really just looking to get our kids into the city schools. Um, and that's really all I want to bring up. And like I said, I missed last time, so that's why I want to make sure I had a chance to speak to y'all, and maybe get some answers, if anything, on these sorts of things, uh, going forward.
Okay, can, can, is that it?
Thank you.
Before we, yeah, let's open the, no, open, no, no public hearing needed here. Uh, can the staff bring, refresh our memories regarding the, those previous actions in recent years that you was talking about?
Sure, so, um, optimal boundary, you know, was developed in 2011. Uh, defines the maximum extent that we would anticipate the city to grow to by 2030. It's based from the AIGM, the Auburn Interactive Growth Model. Anytime property and, anytime property is annexed into the city, you know, that's a decision made by City Council, whether that's in the optimal boundary or outside of the optimal boundary. When property is annexed in and is outside of the optimal boundary, the optimal boundary is updated to include that property. So any properties that show up in optimal boundary now that weren't there before, it's because it was annexed in. I don't recall of any time we've made changes to the optimal boundary. So that's kind of one, one of his questions. The other question he had is about the map, you know, the map is a GIS layer, there are bound to be inaccuracies of it. It's meant to be a representation of the, of the actual, uh, layer, and it is parcel based. So to be in the optimal boundary, your whole property would be in that layer.
What about the, the, the annexation of, of Allen?
Chapel Heights.
Both Chapel Heights, as well as these, they're next to him.
Can you show us where that's at, I'm just approximating, because I guess I'm not following.
I don't think we have a map.
Michael Allen's called Hilldale Farms, is what he calls the subdivision, all the way up to our lot.
I believe so, Logan.
So all that rural is what we're talking about?
I believe that's what the applicant's requesting, or referring to.
That was annexed in when?
I do not know.
Okay, any, anybody have any other questions? Or any, any further discussion?
Well, there was also an issue, I think, at Packett, that we talked a little bit about this, about, it appears that, and this might go to your, how accurate is the GIS versus the actual plat that's, you know, put on record? And that there's some, uh, it appears in, and I don't know which, which shows this, that there is some, the boundary line does, you know, kind of encroach on, on this property. Can you kind of talk a little bit about that? Because what it, you know, it's supposed to be the whole property, or, or?
Yeah, it's, it's, um, just like our zoning layer, or even our annexation layer, they're drawn in based on legal descriptions, or based on plats. Um, sometimes there's just minor, you know, adjustments on those plats or on the layer. Uh, so in this case, I think it, the, uh, growth boundary overlaps the very northern part of his property. Um, and that's just a mapping, it's a mapping error. But it's not a, it's not indicating that his property is eligible to be in that growth boundary.
And, and then, aren't we in the middle, or not in the middle of, but at least we're in some, there's some being, work being done on, let's revisit.
Sure.
You know, the, in the comp plan, and the land use, and the, the, in particular, this optimal boundary.
That's right, so we are, um, in the process of updating the comp plan. So right now, we're focusing on kind of the text amendment part of it, just reviewing the document. Uh, this summer, we'll be looking at any proposed changes to the optimal boundary. And with that, kind of an analysis of where there are places in town that maybe should be eligible for annexation versus places that might not make as much sense for that purpose.
That probably is the time that we can deal with this, at that time, when we're looking at a comprehensive way.
Alright, we, so we would recommend, you know, not looking at individual properties on a case by case like this. We would prefer to look at kind of the area overall.
Unless they're within the optimal boundary now.
Right, right.
Okay. Alright, any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, to follow up on your question about the properties just to the north, they were annexed in 2019.
2019, so that, okay.
I, I do have concern, um, with not allowing this based on the optimal boundary. I think that we have probably blown every growth model out of the water every year since 2011. And I don't know how useful those predictions, um, still are. Um, and I don't disagree with looking at it as a holistic, um, planning view in the comp plan. Every requirement is met other than that one, and it just doesn't make practical sense to me to prevent this, um, based on what we say the considerations are supposed to be for annexation. That's my opinion.
There's always going to be somebody right on the boundary.
Yeah, always.
You know, and it, we've made this plan, this comprehensive plan, best practice is this growth model, right? I mean, this is not something Auburn's just come up with on their own, I mean, this is a best practice in many municipalities. Um, so I gotta believe that it's still up to date and still, uh, you know, a useful tool. Um, you know, in this case, we're just at the point where, here's one right on the boundary, you know? It, and it's, we're gonna adj, we could adjust it maybe in the future, maybe we won't, but right now, it's outside the optimal boundary.
Well, the optimal boundary, and he didn't, you know, the reason we had the optimal boundary was to define the amount of developable properties that we need to accommodate our growth. And that's why the optimal boundary was, was put there, was that there was, it was determined through that model, which is used to quite a few communities, at least in Florida, to determine that we had adequate land within this boundary to accommodate the projected growth for a period of time. So it wasn't intended to, to screen out anybody, but at the same time, it, it still shows we've got a lot of land still within the city limits that can accommodate, uh, what the overall community needs.
And while I agree with you, the timeline was not over 10 years. It initially was supposed to be a five-year period.
Yes.
And our growth is, our growth is far beyond those projections that were used to create that line, far beyond those projections.
I think considering how close we are to updating the line, that we should at least consider, um, this request. I kind of agree with y'all, is, we're, we're on the precipice of redefining that line anyway. Um, if this is something that we foresee that would come under that line in six months, I suppose we should make the applicant apply again six months from now.
Anyone else want to weigh in? Alright, then I will entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve case AX 2023-002. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to recommend approval to the City Council that this property be annexed. I'm gonna have a roll call on this, uh.
Robin Bridges.
Yes.
Phil Chancellor.
No.
David Wisdom.
Yes.
Warren McCord.
No.
Nonette Reese.
Yes.
Bob Rittenbach.
No.
What is the, is that?
Three, three.
Three, three, I, that failed then, the motion fails. Okay. We will be visiting that soon.
Call your City Council person.
Yeah, the City Council. Oh, the City Council.
That will go before City Council this upcoming week.
Yeah, okay. Alright, the next order of business is rezoning for Auburn Crew Headquarters. Logan?
Good evening, Commissioners. The request before you is from Alabama Power Company for their property at 1515 Humphrey Avenue. The request is a rezoning request to rezone a portion of the property from CDD to industrial. The property is a little over three acres, uh, at least the portion of the property is a little over three acres. It was acquired from the city, already zoned CDD, so the applicant is wanting to rezone it to industrial. Just so that the whole property is under one zoning classification. Uh, staff has no issue with this request, and we recommend forwarding to City Council with a recommendation of approval. Have to answer any questions.
Any questions for Logan? Is there anyone representing Alabama Power that wish to address? Yes.
Just here to answer any questions.
Okay.
Is there a plan for doing something on the property, or it's just?
Uh, there's been some initial discussions about, um, some remodeling of the property, but at that time, they'd be required to go through conditional use, so.
Thank you.
You would see a, a request before you if they were to move forward with that.
And, and it's also in the industrial development park, which would be reviewed and, and accommodated by the industrial board, development board. Okay, uh, this does require a public hearing, does anyone wish to address this issue related to rezoning this partial piece? I see no one, so I'll close the public hearing.
I move to approve APC, uh, or RZ 2023-001.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, so we recommend approval. Uh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And the motion carries. The, uh, next is an annex, another annexation, Beehive Park.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. The next six items on your agenda are all relatively in the same area. So I am going to go through all of those for you guys. The first one is Beehive Park, and they are requesting annexation of approximately 19 acres. It's on the north side of Lee Road 10, which is also Beehive Road, east of Biltmore Lane. The property, uh-oh, is right here. And the other two cases, group of cases that will also be on the agenda later on, are highlighted in red. But this is the property that we're focusing on now. You'll see that it's in close proximity to the city's, um, West Tech Park on the east, as well as the Tech Park Annex, which is south of Beehive Road. The industrial zoned property to the east of the subject property was Sonic Tools, that came before you guys, um, late last year, I believe. And then the Briggs and Stratton property across the street was rezoned in 2018 to industrial as well. Uh, we do recommend approval of the annexation, and I will be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alright, we're gonna, any questions, since she has presented all three, we'll vote on them individually, but does anyone have a question on any of the three that she has covered?
Okay, so the rezoning, that was the property that I was just speaking of, Beehive Park, they're requesting to rezone that same 19 acres to industrial from rural. Here is a, an overall map, kind of expanding the view of that area. And you can see that the area has been transitioning towards industrial, light industrial, commercial support uses over the past few years. Um, the Tech Park West was actually developed in 2007, and the annex of the Tech Park to the south of that was completed in 2015. Um, let's see. And you can see that also, the other two Tech Parks are also in close proximity. And both, all three of those are in a location that's central to the interchange for easy access for vehicles. And we do recommend approval of the rezoning for this case. And I can answer any questions if you have on this, if I have any on this one. If not, you all want to go ahead and vote on this one before moving to the next?
I would prefer, first of all, we need to.
Oh, yeah, public hearing.
Anexation, which does not require a public hearing.
Correct.
Uh, do we have, uh, any need to discuss, or anyone wish to make?
Move to approve AX 2023-004. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, uh, any, uh, any other comments on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the annexation will be recommended to City Council or for approval. Now, the next is the rezoning of Beehive Park, which does require a public hearing. Does anyone here wish to address this, uh, rezoning? Okay, I see no one here, so pardon?
This is the public.
This is a public hearing, yes. This is the public hearing, if anybody wishes to address this item. And I see no one, so, uh, close the public hearing, and see if there's any discussion that wish, anybody wish to make regarding this.
Move to approve AX 2023-004, Beehive Park rezoning.
Okay, the motion's been made to, for approval to recommend to City Council, the rezoning.
I'm sorry, Jim, 002 is the number.
What?
RZ.
Yes, can you repeat that, because I think you said AX, not RZ.
Oh, okay, it's RZ 223-02.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's just the next.
We're on the Beehive Park.
Okay, RZ 2023-002, that's the rezoning.
That's the rezoning.
For Beehive Park.
Yes, from rural to.
Second.
And motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion of the motion? All in fo, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries to recommend to City Council rezoning to industrial. The next is the, an annexation?
That's correct, the, uh-oh, let's, hold on. Thank you.
He's out of order.
The next is a request for annexation for property located south of Beehive Road, and it's approximately 13 acres. As I mentioned, the area, um, a few minutes ago, we do recommend. Um, as I mentioned, the area, um, a few minutes ago, we do recommend approval of the annexation, and I can answer any questions you have. Otherwise, I will go to the rezoning.
Right.
So they are requesting, or the city of Auburn Industrial Development Board is requesting annexation, or, sorry, rezoning of approximately thirteen acres from rural to industrial. And this is in a future land clas- a future land use classification of light industrial, and we do recommend approval.
Okay, let's take the first part of this one, uh, first item, having to do with the, uh, annexation of the Week's property, uh, thirteen point one four acres. Uh, is there any discussion among the commission regarding this, this item? Then I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve AX twenty twenty-three zero zero five Weeks' annexation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we recommend city council annexation. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and the motion carries. Now, the rezoning, you heard the, the discussion of rezoning, and we, this requires a public hearing. The recom- the, the motion or request is that we recommend to city council for rezoning of the property from, to industrial from rural. And I will open that public hearing now if there's anyone that wishes to, uh, address this issue. And I see no one, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, open the commission up for discussion. If there is no discussion, then I'll also entertain a motion.
Move to approve RZ twenty twenty-three zero zero three rezoning request for the Week's property.
Second.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded that, uh, we recommend to the city council rezoning of approximately thirteen point one four acres to industrial from rural. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and the motion carries. Now, Katie?
All right, the, uh, final request in this vicinity is also a request from the Industrial Development Board for the annexation and rezoning of approximately seventy-eight acres. The property is also located on the south side of Beehive Road. And we do recommend approval of the annexation. The rezoning of the property, let me get to the exhibit. Okay, so with the rezoning of this property, the IDB is going to provide, let me see, a undisturbed buffer of seventy-five feet on the west side of the property, in addition to a twenty-five-foot building setback from that seventy-five feet. So essentially a hundred feet, um, buffer yard to the adjacent properties on the west. And we also recommend approval of this rezoning.
Okay. On the first item, it has to do with the annexation. Is there any need for further discussion? Are any questions?
Move to approve AX twenty twenty-three zero zero six McAllister Property Annexation.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we recommend to city council for annexation of this property, seventy-eight point three acres. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no, and the motion carries. Now, the second part is the rezoning, and that requires a public hearing so that you can have input into this decision. And I will open that public hearing now. Anyone wish to address, and someone is coming forward. And when you finish, if you haven't signed in, please do.
Absolutely. Uh, my name's Jay Pember. Uh, if we could pull the map back up, that would be great. Um, as you see there on the map, if you see that property, it's a pie shape. That's my house. That's my property. I am shocked that there would be a twenty-five, or a seventy-five-foot, the buffer that's being suggested here. That looks out directly of my backyard. This property was, I'm not sure, I'm sure was annexed into the city limits probably two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen. Understand that this area was previously unwanted property. Nobody wanted to live out there, and, um, five homes were built out there. We've built our lives out there, we've come to enjoy our property. If you look at the size of that property and suggesting the small buffer, considering the size of the property, that's completely unacceptable. We have, we spend so much time outside, and, and this would, you thoroughly hinder the enjoyment of our property. If you look at the Briggs and Stratton building, you know, granted, nobody's property backs up to that. There's properties across the street, there's beside it. But the lights are completely unacceptable and intrusive into the, and prevent the enjoyment of the people closest to it. Um, you know, keep in mind, we're not against the growth of the city, or, um, we certainly support that. But please, I ask the consideration of whoever's the Industrial Development Board and ultimately goes here. The buffer has got to be bigger. That is completely unacceptable, considering this is our home and the, the size of the property that is gonna be there. There's plenty of room to build and have a much larger buffer. You know, to have another, I don't recall the number, seventy-five feet or a hundred feet or whatever it was within a property line is completely unacceptable, considering this is our home. I know nobody in here would wanna have a property this size with that small a buffer that close to their home. So I ask that you think about this as if this was your home, and how it's gonna prevent the year enjoyment. So my question is, is the peo- the people, is it the Industrial Development Board that owns this property now?
They will, they're, I think, it's their request, right?
Yes, and this is their request.
So at this point, do we know what, who's gonna buy it, who they intended to sell it to, what's gonna go there?
Probably not.
Not pervy right now.
That's not, that's not before us either.
Okay, okay. Um, but I know, you know, I certainly have, my other neighbors are here, um, that this will affect as well. Um, I know there's, um, some other neighbors over here that have been there for much longer than we have, and have much more property, and their home will have a, certainly have a significant view of whatever goes there. The buffer needs to be more, we're not asking, you know, you know, we're not here to, you know, fight whatever's gonna go there, but we accept that what's gonna go there, but the buffer has got to be bigger. So whatever motion I suggest, I suggest, you know, accept the motion, but we request that the motion include that the buffer needs to be larger. That's all I, thank you.
Right now, before us is whether this property will be annexed into the city and, or rezoned. We've already annexed it, or recommended annex, will be rezoned to industry, not the type of uses or other than what's allowable under industrial. And the buffers and all under the purview of the Industrial Development Board. And if you look, go through any of our industrial parks, I mean, I, I've been through a number of industrial parks throughout this state and country, and ours are so well-designed, so speciously, uh, placed, a lot of open space, a lot of setbacks from all property, other properties, so, uh.
Are they in your backyard?
Uh, no, I wouldn't have built out there myself, because this was an industrial area, it was moving that way, so I live in another area. But, uh, you know, the industry's been moving that way for twenty-five, thirty years, or longer. I, I don't remember when they did the west, Park West, but it's been there a long time.
Well, I certainly appreciate that, that it's been moving that way, but if that was the intent to move that way, then why did you, or whoever approved this as residential, to build homes?
The public hearing is.
Really, it's, it was, it's rural, when it's annexed, it's rural. It's not, we don't, it, it's not a, there's a whole lot of uses in rural too, by the way, that are not just residential. So the bottom line is, is this property adjacent to other industrial property, uh, appropriate for industrial use? That's what's before us.
Understand, understand. You know, I hope whoever's gonna be developing this property who's in here, when you're in here, I certainly hope that you're considered.
Well, address the board, please, address us.
Absolutely. But there, the people are in here, so I want to, if they're in here, I'm addressing you guys, but if they're in here, I certainly am requesting that you consider the fact that you're gonna be in my backyard and my neighbor's backyard. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to address the board?
Marlene Bowman, thirty-seven fifty-seven Biltmore Lane. This also will be in my backyard. And Mr. McCord, we've been there since nineteen eighty-six. There were no industrial things out there at that time. There were cotton fields and cows. Very few people lived out there. Our neighbor actually lived in a little shack with no running water, no electricity. Okay, so we've been there quite a while. If you will go back to the aerial view, please. All right. If you see the tree line as it is right there on the proposed annexation, that is old hardwoods, very few pines in there. At the very least, we want that to stay. There is a hundred-foot buffer now between Briggs and Stratton and Biltmore. It's terrible. I don't know what parks you've driven through, but that buffer is unacceptable. The lights on that building are horrific. They're brighter than lights on the other buildings and other parks that we drive through daily. They're obtrusive, they're obtrusive to the neighbors, they're obtrusive to wildlife. And those tree stands are a lot of wildlife, a lot of deer, a lot of owls. One of the reasons we all love living there. My question, years ago when Briggs went in, was why would you do this to the, these five homes? These are over half a million-dollar homes on that street that were approved that never should have been if this was in the plan. We've been there since nineteen eighty-six. You know, there was nothing then, so I can kinda understand that. But this would be obtrusive, and it also would have, would affect property values, which we all just got our property taxes raised, and now this is gonna happen. You know, so I'm a realtor, Nonette's a realtor, we understand about property values. And I think it's unfair and insensitive to think that a hundred-foot buffer is gonna protect our properties. So that's all that all of us are trying to ask, is we know we can't stop what is happening, but we can all become good neighbors. We are in the city of Auburn, so the city of Auburn should also protect us. And that is what everyone in this town wants people to consider. Protect my home, protect my property value, protect my way of life and that of my neighbors. So let's work together. And you guys can request that of the IDB. The IDB doesn't even tell us when it meets. They meet whenever they want to meet, because we would love to meet with them, but we, we aren't allowed to know when that happens. So we want it on record that we are asking, acknowledging this is gonna happen, but we are asking for everyone to work with us to make this a more pleasant experience, to allow that wildlife to stay there, to allow that stand of trees to stay there, to redirect lighting so it's not obtrusive and affect our way of life and our property values. Thanks.
Anyone else? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. And, uh, continue the discussion with the board if there is further discussion needed. All right, is there?
I personally, I know that no one likes that there's a hundred-foot buffer, but a hundred-foot buffer doesn't have to be there at all. And they are at least making that a point, to have that along your property line.
All right, any, and I might point out that the IDB is a quasi-independent board of, of the city that has, uh, a good bit of independence in terms of its, uh, of its duties. Uh, and certainly it's not subordinate to this, this group other than for rezoning. So is there, uh, anybody wish to make a motion?
Prior to voting, this goes before city council.
This will go before them?
May eighteenth.
May eighteenth.
May eighteenth.
Thank you, Katie.
All right, do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve RZ twenty twenty-three zero zero six, the rezoning for McAllister Property.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, is there any further discussion of the motion? And I'll call for the motion and, uh, call for roll call.
I guess I have, let me have one question, please.
Yes.
So, um, this particular, for rezoning, and this is, I, I, I guess I'm not sure if I remember a situation where this happened. You know, when we have conditional uses, we can make suggestions on what goes along with that. Now zoning is, there's no, no such latitude.
That is correct, and with an industrial zoning, they'll have to come back later for conditional use approval on whatever may or may not go here.
Okay, so what goes here, and then that's a point in time where we can have some conditions placed on it if we need to. So right now, what we're doing is just rezoning, we're not, and there's no action in terms of what's happening on this property.
Correct.
Okay, just wanna make sure.
All right, so the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion of the motion? Then let's have a roll call vote, please.
Robin Bridges?
Yes.
Phil Chancellor?
Yes.
David Wisdom?
Yes.
Warren McCord?
Yes.
Nonette Reese?
Yes.
Bob Rittenbach?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and we are recommending to city council for rezoning. Number tenth item on our agenda is the Farmville Lakes, if I recall.
Yes, sir. It is a request to amend the Farmville Lakes Plan Development District in order to reduce the approved amount of commercial space from sixty thousand square feet to twenty-five thousand square feet, and to also add an additional sixty multifamily units in Phase Six. The overall PDD is approximately a hundred and one acres, and the majority is zoned CDD, or the base zone is CDD, and a portion down on the south is DDH. The subject, um, the portion of the subject property that is subject to the PDD amendment is here, located, um, fronting US Highway two eighty at East Farmville. This is the current approved master development plan. It is, Phase Six encompasses approximately nine and a half acres, and the original MDP broke this area up into four commercial lots with an additional, or with sixty multifamily units. And at the time the PDD was approved, you also approved, or the commission recommended approval of a number of conditional uses for that commercial space.
That was in two thousand and eighteen, was it not?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
The proposed master development plan, um, changes only in Phase Six to break up into two phases, Phase Six A, which is currently under construction, and Phase Six B, which would be the area of the property subject to the PDD amendment. They wish to, as I mentioned, reduce the commercial space to twenty-five thousand square feet and add an additional sixty multifamily units. There is a sixty-unit multifamily development under construction in Phase Six A at the time. Let's see. The unit count for the PDD would increase from two eighty to three forty, which increases the density to twelve point six. The maximum density in CDD is normally nine and a half, but the PDD designation allows them to go up to fourteen in a phase. And the overall density would have to remain under nine and a half. And the overall density would increase to three point three five dwelling units per acre.
To your knowledge, has, has anything changed in there since this was approved when they agreed to it?
In two thousand and eighteen?
Mm-hmm.
No, this is the First Amendment, too.
I know, but I'm talking about in, in the vicinity, I'm trying, I think it's, it's incumbent upon the petitioner to, to convince this board, uh, what has changed since they last agreed to this, uh, rezoning.
In that respect, no, I don't believe anything has.
Amber, will you go back to the, to the previous?
Amber, will you go back to the previous slide? Thank you.
Sure. Phases one, two, and five here behind Phase Six are being developed as, those are townhome lots. And all of this here, Phase Eight has not yet started construction, but the rest of the phases have begun with single-family construction here.
And where are the sixty units, are they in this, in this particular drawing? Are they in the C-four area or also C-three as well?
They would be here, these two on the corner here.
The existing ones?
The one that's.
Oh, the existing, I'm sorry. Yes, these two here.
Both of them, okay.
So C-three and C-four.
Yes.
And so right now, the commercial is C-one, C-two, but this PDD is saying, let's change C-one, C-two into less commercial and add some more.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay. Family housing.
Six B, or I'm sorry, six A, where the multifamily is currently under construction, is just over, or it's six-point-seven-four acres. The two lots that would be, that are shown here, which six B, are just under three acres.
All right, now, how many, what would be the size of the property remaining should we, should this be approved? How much commercial area would be left?
Just under three acres.
Just under three acres.
For commercial, for twenty-five thousand square feet of commercial and sixty multifamily units.
All right, any more questions? All right.
Thank you.
Now, well, is there anyone representing the Farmville Lakes applicant that would wish to say something, please? Are you the applicant?
No, sorry.
No, we need the applicants, is what I need. Your turn will come next. Right now, I need to hear from the applicant.
I'm ready.
It looks like.
David Slocum, I'm the engineer representing the developer. The reason for the request is just simply that the developer's not had a lot of interest from commercial buyers or developers in this area. And, you know, a lot has happened in the economy in the last five years. And he just feels like a more appropriate use would be to reduce that commercial. Still have some commercial on that corner of Farmville Road and two-eighty, but increase the residential. And the sixty thousand was not a minimum anyway. It was more of an allowed, you know, up to sixty thousand square feet. But that's simply what it is. The developer just doesn't feel like there's going to be that much interest to occupy sixty thousand square feet of commercial.
Questions? Slocum? All right, thank you. Now we'll open the public hearing.
Let me say first of all that I appreciate what you all do for all of us for keeping our neighborhoods safe and alive. And.
Sir, what's your name?
What's your name?
I'm sorry, Harold Watson, two-five-four-nine Farmville Lakes Drive. Okay. So my wife and I moved here two years ago into a neighborhood that's brand new. So Farmville Lakes is a brand-new neighborhood. We're excited about that. And we chose to come here because we're down here so much anyway from Birmingham, so we decided to come on down here. We've lived throughout the whole southeast and different places and different areas. And fifty-five years ago, we got married and married two apartments, so now we're back at home again. So my wife said, make it short and make it direct, so here we go. So this is really about safety. It's about traffic issue. It's about quality of life, okay? So number one, in terms of, and I'm all for growth. I applaud the growth in the north Auburn area, what's happened there. When we came here two years ago, we asked for the master plan, which we were shared. And we were explaining A, B, and C. And Michael Dilworth, developer, built our house, the last house. It was the fifth house in the neighborhood, brand-new. So we're all excited about it. And so, you know, we understand that, you know, that he sold to Harris Doyle. And so we knew then it was going to be a detailed area. But that was changed, I think, maybe about two years ago after Michael wanted to build apartments. I could be wrong, but that's what I understood. Is that anyway? So he kept the rights to build apartments, not houses, from Harris Doyle. So he builds apartments. So now he wants to build more, or somebody wants to build more apartments. And we're saying, okay, where are the people going to come into? We've annexed the adjacent Ashton Road on Farmville Road there. We have more traffic already in our neighborhood. We're going to expand it. And my concern really comes down to these three. One, the traffic in our neighborhood, people drive more than forty-five miles an hour in our neighborhood. We finally got one of the signs put up about a month ago, twenty-five miles an hour. I don't know who did that, but, you know, thank you all for helping me did that. That was good. And so we have no speed bumps. And I know that's kind of a different notch off the end of it, but we've got to reduce the speed in the neighborhood. We have children, obviously. And so our concern is for the safety of all of us coming in there. The major concern in terms of the traffic is Highway two-eighty and Farmville Road. So you got new people coming in there, new houses being built, new apartments. Where all those folks are going to come to a major issue of traffic concern. So as we, our, we have no homeowners, we have a home management association out of Birmingham. They knew I was coming tonight to speak before you all. And so did our, our City Councilman. She knew that I was coming to speak to you all as well, too. So I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to, because our case was worth. And we welcome growth. We just want to have the right growth to ensure safety and quality of life for all of us who live there. Thank you.
So clear what you want, or your interest is, traffic, but you're not opposed to the, are you, the commercial as it's presented or as they wish?
You know, I don't want to put in one without a job, but I want to be sure that we have additional opportunities to shop, if that's what we want to do, you know, because that was, we were so excited about the neighborhood, you know, brand-new. We were kind of sold to build the goods, which that's okay. I understand the marketing aspect of it. And promise this, promise that. Then Harris Doyle took over from Michael Dilworth. We had, we changed a lot of the things there, you know, moved the developer, changed all that, you know. So, you know, I guess the question I've got, do you all think we'd be safe as a neighborhood to build more, you know, have more people come in there? And if it's the case, can we do something about the traffic flow, you know? And another sidebar, this is kind of a, we don't have animals, and we love dogs and love cats. But with more, with more, you could have more dogs. We have no dog park. So it's kind of, you know, that's, my wife said not to say that.
Nobody will say.
We won't tell.
But we do have a leash law. You're aware of that.
But we're good neighbors, so we, you know, we don't.
Well.
But I would just, you know, I just encourage you all to take a really look at it and to see if it's the best interest. I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to guide, you know, to build it, no. I just say maybe we need to take it a little bit slower, you know, and get some of us who live there maybe more attuned, more involved in it, you know, say, hey, you know, give them work together about this thing.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. And if you've signed in, we need both, well, you can do it after you finish, but we want all the names of anyone that speaks.
She's a good name, too.
My name is Megan Corcoran, two-four-zero-nine Furlong Trail. I could probably tell you more about this neighborhood than anybody because I sold a hundred houses in this neighborhood, and I've purchased two houses in this neighborhood, and I'm shaking, honestly. I feel very conflicted. Mr. Watson is wonderful, and the vision that I was sold to sell to the homeowners is we're going to have commercial on the lower level of these four parcels, loft-style living on top. Everyone was fine with that. I want to walk up on a Tuesday night, get a slice of pizza and a beer, maybe play some trivia, go back home. There are hundreds of homeowners in this neighborhood. We are now attached to Ashton Lakes. There are many hundreds of neighbors in this neighborhood. We have nothing to do on this side of town. If I'm desperate, yeah, I'll go to Wendy's real quick, but otherwise, I'm going to Opa-ica and spending my money there. So I'm not, sorry. I'm just saying proximity-wise, where we are, we hang around two-eighty, and you're at Frederick Road in no time, you're at Tiger Town in no time. There is absolutely a need for commercial space there. I had people that were interested in having businesses there, but it was so far down the line, we weren't ready to have that conversation. And we, as, I worked for Dilworth, I also worked for Harris Doyle. You know, I understand the business. I also welcome the growth. My livelihood depends on it. Not that long ago, someone was killed turning out onto two-eighty from that street. We're already going to have two more phases of single homes completed in this neighborhood. That's at least another hundred cars, in addition to at least sixty more apartment cars. So I don't know what that's going to look like. I'm fine if there are some more apartments, but I don't want to lose the commercial, and I want that to be important. Also, would love if we could figure out a plan. We have an amenities center. There's going to be a lot of people living in an apartment paying a lot of money, nineteen hundred dollars a month for eleven hundred square feet, that are going to want to come over and use our amenities center that we have to pay a lot of money for. So I don't know how that's going to be handled, but more people is just going to be more of an issue for things that are already a problem, and we're only at half-capacity in the neighborhood. So I appreciate your time, and.
Thank you.
My opinion, you live in Tiger Town, you go to a place calls itself Tiger Town.
Yes, sir. That's fine. I'm really from Ohio, but either way, more evil.
Okay, anyone else? Then I'll close the public hearing, and we will continue our discussion. I'll say right off the bat that I think that when we envisioned, and we did a corridor study out that way, and we thought that there would be a need in the future for commercial, and that's why we placed on that map that we looked at, one of these nodes right here, if I recall, for commercial. So this is, and we are planning body. The developer is living in the now, and I understand that, but we've got to deal with the future and the possibilities of the immediate future. I understand markets also change, and I recognize that, but anyone, anyone else want to comment on that?
I would like to mention that I've also received several calls and a couple of emails that were in opposition to the request.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, you touched on kind of what I have thought from the beginning of looking at this and from driving by it every day. We commit to do our best to plan wisely and smartly and judiciously. And I don't think that anyone who drives out there and looks at this right now would say that is great planning. You've got a multifamily complex right on top of the people in the townhouses. And I don't know how it got by us the last time it came up, but obviously it did. And the other thing that is very concerning is that we have, this is not the first time that we have heard about promises broken or things that the residents were told when they bought their homes that never materialized or aren't going to materialize. And that is concerning. When we approve something, it's in good faith, that it's going to be what we're told it's going to be. And so I don't see any reason that this change is valid or good.
And I'll, you know, give Lynn some support to that as well. I think we've got a couple of things going on here that we've got to pay attention to. And one of them is having some outline commercial like this. Because all that right now as we're doing is generating, you know, automobile miles, you know, people have to get in their car and drive. You know, we're starting to do a great thing downtown. I mean, a lot of people, you know, have a lot of heartache about these, the large buildings. But, you know, we're putting in amenities downtown. We're putting commercial in downtown. We've got a new Publix down there. We've got all these places that people don't have to drive to anymore. If we reduce some of that here, I mean, maybe you can't buy a commercial business or the commercial people don't want to come right now, but in the future, it's going to be good for us. But that kind of also kind of makes, you know, it compounds, in the meantime, it's compounding the problem along that stretch of Farmville Road. That is a, to me, is a dangerous road. That is not, you know, it's an old-crowned, two-lane road. It's, people fly down that thing. And, you know, so there's some, you know, there's got to be some kind of, you know, and there's always a really good, the city engineer and the people that work with that sort of thing, there are clear guidelines that say, okay, when you get enough traffic, now we have to start, you know, doing some of these changes. So, you know, if we can get the changes that would help us now, because the problem with that Farmville Road is now, and it's only getting worse when you put these new houses in there. And then if you put a couple of sixty-unit apartments on top of that, that's only going to make it, you know, a real crazy town. So I think it's a good idea to keep the commercial as it is, try to lower that density a little bit, and then work on the improvements for the road over there on Farmville.
Okay, anyone else? All right, if we don't have any more comments, I will entertain a motion.
I move that we recommend to City Council to deny the change.
Our motion's been made. We recommend City Council that the proposal be denied. Any?
Second.
Second.
All right, we've had a motion, and I seconded. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion to deny, say aye.
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 Any oppose, say no, and the motion carries. Okay, moving on to a preliminary plat for Farmville Lakes. That's Phase Six.
Yes, sir. This is a request for preliminary plat approval for a full lot mixed-use subdivision. Includes two development lots, one lot for future development, and one open-space lot. The subject property is what's shown on the master development plan for Farmville Lakes is Phase Six at the fronting US Highway two-eighty at Farmville Road. Here is a copy of the plat. This lot down here is going to be the open-space lot. It's just about two and a half acres. These two lots here are the lots that the current multifamily development is under construction. And this lot will be a lot for future development. This plat establishes the extension of Cloverdale Drive to Highway two-eighty, and it meets the subdivision regulations, and staff recommends approval.
This is the property that we just discussed? Okay.
This was a no matter what happens to the other.
Correct, yeah. This is sort of separate and apart from.
Yeah, this could be a subdivision, could be a commercial subdivision.
Subdivision was actually approved in twenty-twenty-one, but has since expired. So it's just coming back to you for approval.
Okay, and I see that you recommend with comments?
Yes.
All right.
Just minor, notational mainly. Should be able to be cleaned up easily.
Okay. Does the applicant want to say anything about the subdivision? Okay, this requires a public hearing, which we will open now. Is there anyone wishes to come from the audience to address this or ask questions regarding the subdivision? I see none, so I'll close the public hearing, and we will continue our discussion. Any?
I move to approve PP two-one-e twenty-three zero-zero-seven Farm Lakes Phase Six preliminary plat.
Second.
Most been made and seconded, that we approve.
Mr. Chair, is that with staff comments as well?
Staff comments, absolutely.
All right, we have a motion for approval with subject of staff comments and a second. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose, say no. And the motion carries. Beating with the final plat now.
Yes, this is just the final plat approval for the preliminary plat you just approved.
Okay, normally final plats come in afterward, but this is pretty simple, and we'd already dealt with this at one time. So, and it does not require a public hearing. Is there any questions or discussion that you wish to have regarding the final plat?
Move to per.
We've got two motions to approve. We're going to get two seconds.
Second.
We got it. Motion's been made and seconded that we approve the final plat for Farmville Phase PH Six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All oppose, say no, and it passes. Now to Madison Park. ID amendment.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, one of two requests, uh, located at six fifty-two Haley Lane. The first request is a rezoning request to amend the Madison Park PDD by removing approximately one point six nine acres from the planned development. The property requested to be removed is the property on the corner of Haley Lane and Wire Road right here. Um, the Madison Park PDD has had several amendments over the years and has switched from residential to commercial. Uh, it also had a lot of the property that was in the back removed from the PDD. Uh, so the applicant is requesting to remove, uh, this piece of property from the PDD so that it may be developed independently. Uh, the applicant, for your next item on the agenda, uh, conditional use request for sixteen, uh, multi-unit development, sixteen-unit multi-unit development. Um, for this rezoning request, staff recommends denial. I'd be happy to answer any questions. I did receive one call in opposition.
What is your reason for denial?
The, um, basically removal of, of the property from the PDD further erodes, um, any type of, you know, cohesiveness for that development. Um, in addition, CDD alone allows a lot of different uses by right that would, uh, may conflict with whatever was previously approved in that PDD.
Does a developer wish to, uh, address this request?
Brett Basquin with the Forsyth Group, uh, representing the applicant. Originally, this PDD was fifty acres. Um, back in two thousand twelve, a majority of it, thirty-seven acres was removed from this PDD, where there's thirteen acres remaining. Um, of the remaining thirteen acres, we're the only parcel that's undeveloped. Everything out there else is developed that's within this PDD. You have the Madison Park multifamily. You have the Dollar General and then you have Gray's, uh, auto, the, uh, Gray's Auto there next door. We are the only piece on the south side of Haley Lane. We are not connected to the rest of this PDD other than we're on the other side of Haley Lane. Our particular parcel is split zoned. We're CDD, uh, where we wrap around the parcel that, uh, fronts, um, on Wire Road and then we have, uh, part of that parcel that's within the PDD. So, we're kind of split zoned. Um, you know, during the pre-app, when we were talking about this with the city, um, you know, it was, we were under the oppression, the least path of resistance here was to remove this from the PDD as opposed to, uh, expand the PDD to include the rest of our, um, property within the PDD. Um, so that's kind of the path we chose after going through the pre-app process. If the concern is, um, we're fine with the use, but we want to, uh, but we want you to, to stay in the PDD, then we'll, you know, I mean, we would go that route. But we, we thought this was the, since we were the only pieces left, uh, left to develop. In regards to cohesiveness, we're separated from the rest of this stuff by Haley Lane. We have trailer parks to the south of us, um, and, and a, a trailer office that kind of, that we wrap there. Mind you, all that stuff's in the county too, um, south of us. Um, you know, I consider this, we're kind of like in no man's land on this stretch of Wire Road between Webster and Cox. And if we're all real honest in regards to commercial development along this corridor, it's going to develop at the nodes and at the intersections. The, the commercial activity is going to centralize at Webster and at Cox. And we've seen at, at Cox intersection, there's two PDDs that I'm aware of that's bringing about fifty thousand square feet, if not more, of commercial, uh, to that node. I, I feel like if we think that we're going to have this whole corridor as commercial from the whole way, there's, there's no way. I mean, even on South College, there's portions of South College that has residential that, uh, is, uh, that does have frontage on there within different nodes. So, I mean, I don't think this is, this isn't like a commercial corridor. Um, we do think that, um, you know, this area is transitioning. Um, we do think that there's plenty of nodal, uh, availability at Webster and Cox for commercial uses and feel like that, um, th- this use, uh, wouldn't be, um, wouldn't be that, that, that far off. And like I said, you know, we went down the road of just removing it because we were the only thing left in the PDD. Um, and, you know, we're separated, um, like I said, by that road. So, that's kind of the, the points I just wanted to bring up. I know I got into some of the conditional use stuff of it, but, you know, if, if we're good with the use and it's more of, we'd rather establish and maintain the PDD, you know, then I guess we could go that route. But we felt like this was the least path of resistance since we were the only thing left undeveloped. All right? Be happy to answer any questions.
Brett, wasn't this, this has a history, if I recall. And I think you were referencing then when, when you came in for incentives on this PDD.
I did not do this one.
You did not do this?
I, I did not do this.
Okay.
I, this one actually predates me. The original PDD predates me even moving here, uh, back when Madison Park and all that stuff. But most of the incentives I think that you're talking about was the original PDD back when this thing was seventy-something acres, right? Um, and then once it, wh- once they started pulling acreage out of this PDD, um, you know, the developer on this deal went defunct. So, you kind of had Madison Park that was three quarters of the way built and went, uh, and then, um, uh, went into bankruptcy. So, other people bought parts of that out of foreclosure and developed it. And then the rest of the PDD, all the stuff in the back where you have Tiger Transit and all that stuff, that was all part of the PDD as well. All that stuff got pulled out. So, a majority of what's left in this thing is, uh, out there. You see a lot of vacant land out there. There is a stream, there is flood plain, there's a lot of encoverances. If you look in that packet, you'll see the original kind of PDD area that's outlined in there. You see a whole big area, you know what I mean? But if you just look at what's outlined, that's the only thirteen acres that we're talking about in this PDD. All those other uses right there, you can see it wrap around creeks, flood plains and everything else. I mean, you know, those are, are, are going to be very difficult, um, to develop, the further back stuff back there.
We have an aerial. So, I'm hearing that you don't have to come out of the PDD to do this.
I mean, well, I mean, if we need to, we'll just pull in the, you know, the other component of it if that's the, the, um, if that's the concern, you know?
I don't understand, I'm sorry, I don't understand what that means. When you say pull, so there's more property that you want to use?
Yeah, yeah, so our piece, our, our piece is kind of like an L. So, we,
Gotcha.
So, we wrap around the piece that, there's a little piece in the county that fronts us. So, our shape is like an L, so just the stem is within the PDD, part of the, the building.
Logan, could you flip to, just quickly to the, uh, map that is shown on the conditional use, just so we can get an idea of what that, there you go.
Yeah, yeah, there you go. That red outline is our property. So, the,
Thank you, yes.
Purple hash is the PDD. Um, so, yeah, that, that's why, so it was either expand the PDD or just pull it out. If, and, you know, be honest, if, if there was, if, if there was more vacant out there within the PDD, we probably would have pulled it in. But because we were the only thing left out there, there's not much to, you know, we're basically tying into what's, what's there, what's built around us within the PDD. So, that was the, that was just the way we went. Okay?
So, in two thousand twelve was when this body approved to the removal of thirty-seven point thirty-nine acres from this PDD?
Basically, all of that stuff back.
What were we thinking?
Well, remember, that was a different time, right? That was the Great Recession, you know?
Yeah.
I, I, I mean, really, it was, it was, it was different out there. Um, it was, it was a different time. So, but yeah. It, it, it's kind of misleading because this, this master plan shows that all back there and I was under the impression that that was all in it as well. But when, once you boil it down, it, the, the current PDD is just that blue outline area with our, you know, with three quarters of our parcel in it, about a third of our parcels out of it. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Brett. Is there, uh, I guess we will open the public hearing. This is a, uh, requires a public hearing for PDD amendment, rezoning. Is there anyone wish to, from the public, wish to address this issue? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Michael Musclewhite and, uh, I'm actually involved in the development of this. And, um, a couple of things that didn't really get said, and Brett did a good job of kind of laying it out, but I was in real estate since ninety-seven around here. I remember when Madison Park came out here and the original plan under the PDD in two thousand eight was this was residential. Like, it was condos the whole way. And, um, like Brett said, only part of the property is two point four acres total, but only part of the property, only one point six nine, I believe, is under the PDD. And the original PDD, there wasn't even a road there. So, this, this has gone through, you know, hundreds and hundreds of condos, uh, to first phase of Madison Park condos and then Dollar General and then Gray's Tire Auto with Tiger Transit back behind us. All that got taken out of the PDD when Tiger Transit came in. All the flood plain stuff got taken out. Um, part of the property wasn't even in, is under CDD, so it still would have to meet all the rules and requirements for CDD. But it, it, to add it back in now, we have to go to Gray's Tire Auto and involve them and waste their time and effort. We have to go to the other people. And we just, like Brett said, it's just a cleaner way. Y'all still have control of what comes to be developed there, but it's a lot cleaner way. And that road wasn't even in there. That road, that road, the detention pond and all that back there wasn't even part of, of the original vision of that area. So, um, and also I've been told, uh, Buck Starr told me across the street, he's about to develop some commercial. There's going to be down at the corner, like Brett said, on both corners. Um, and, and when we talked to the city staff about it, uh, we agreed that the best way to come in would be for multifamily. And it says multifamily, it sounds like apartment complexes, but that's not it. It's going to be sixteen, fifteen to sixteen freestanding houses. And they're going to look like, the vision of it is to, to look like that really, really nice house in Botanic. And I have a picture if y'all want to see it. But there's a really, if you drive in Botanic, they've got the landscape part on the left and they've got kind of down to the middle and right by the pond, they have the gift shop and the, and the restaurant. And then there's a house to the right of that that they're using as an office. And it's like really, 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 really nice. And that's the vision. The vision of that is to have the houses there and to, uh, really tailor the antennas for the game day market. And so, people are going to come in Buc-E's. They're going to go to the real, they're going to come into Buc-E's and they're going to come to their, uh, house, once y'all approve this. And then they're going to, Tiger Transit office is right behind us on the hill, right behind the fence. There, that's where they keep all the buses. So, Tiger Transit is going to pick up the, these folks so they don't ever have to get on the road. They don't have to drink and drive. They can go straight to the stadium, just over two miles and straight back home. And then they can get on, next morning, they get in, back on the interstate, go out and visit Buc-E's again and go home. So, brings in, this project brings in all kinds of tax dollars to the city going to Buc-E's alone. Anyway, I would really, really, um, hope that y'all would approve this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mike, just for the record, um, Madison Park wa- did contain commercial in oh-six and then it, fifty-two thousand square feet of commercial was removed in two thousand and seven. So, originally it was a multi, multi.
Yes, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that the commercial, there's, a lot of commercial was already built now and they, what they took out to build that commercial was the residential component. We're not going back with high density. We could go back, we could ask for a lot higher density. We're going back with a lower density. Um, so hopefully y'all will support it.
Okay, is there anyone else, uh, in the audience who wish to address this issue? If not, I will close the public hearing and, um, open up for discussion.
What, what sort of uses, kind of to the, uh, south, kind of south down Wire Road? What's, what's next to this as you go away from the city on Wire Road?
Um, a lot of it's in the county, but there are some manufactured home parks, um, some vacant lots. There's a new development, um, Tiger Shadows, yeah, uh, that was annexed in the city and is under construction.
That's a, a commercial entity?
No.
Oh, it's a residential?
Mm-hmm.
That does have a commercial portion at the front of it.
Not the one with the billboard?
All right. Um.
Okay, so they come out of the PDD, it reverts back to CDD. Is that automatic?
It just stays CDD.
CDD.
Mm-hmm.
Trying to go lesser of two evils.
And you, your concern in your denial was the fact that it, it would lose some co- here at sea with the, with the PDD?
Sure, I think, um, that area on the current PDD is shown as commercial and similar to the Farmville Lakes discussion. Um, you know, at, at, as often as possible, we're trying to preserve commercial spaces.
Any more questions? Anyone wish to propose a motion?
I move to approve, um, RZ twenty twenty-three zero zero five.
Second.
Approving it for denial?
No, we're approving it for approval.
You're recommending.
We're, we're forwarding it to the city council with a recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
That is my motion. So many words.
And I'll be denied.
Thank you. Yes.
Okay.
All right. Motion's been made and seconded for approval. And the approval would be to amend the plant, PDD district, uh, PDD designation to remove the one point six nine acres. All right, that's the motion. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
No. Oh, no.
It's another tie, is it not?
I don't know. That, that means the motion is, fails.
Correct.
The motion fails.
But it will still move forward to?
City Council with a, okay.
Can we do a roll call, just to clarify?
Okay, let a roll call.
Robin Bridges?
Yes.
Phil Chancellor?
No.
David Wisdom?
Yes.
Warren McCord?
No.
Nonette Reese?
Yes.
Bob Rittenbach?
No.
What date is city council?
Eighteenth of May.
Eighteenth. Okay. Then the, uh,
Do the next one.
The next item is the Wire Road multifamily.
Still have to do it in case.
Um, which can be done?
Yes, you can, you'll, you'll need to, yeah, make a recommendation on this as well. Um, this is a conditional use request for the same property in its entirety this time. Um, for sixteen, uh, residential units, this would be considered a multi-unit development. The, uh, concept plan or the layout plan, uh, shows, as I mentioned, sixteen units. They'd be standalone units and they would take access from Haley Lane. Um, staff recommends denial of the, uh, conditional use request and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any more, any questions?
Can you tell us a little, a little again on, you know, why recommending denial?
Sure. Um, so, as I mentioned, uh, the PDD shows this area designated for commercial development. Um, looking at this from a corridor perspective, we feel that commercial would be the kind of highest and best use for the property. Um, or some type of mixture of uses could also, um, be feasible here. And so, that's essentially why we're recommending denial of the residential only.
Okay. Okay, does the, uh, developer or his rep want to?
So, okay, okay, quick question here for you is, if they're fine with the use, could they approve it for conditional use and, and, and have recommendation for denial on the zoning, but, but approve the conditional use to where it's more of, hey, you got to go amend the PDD?
I was trying to ask that earlier. I, I'm with you.
Yeah. So, that, so that, that's one of my questions. The other part of that is, on the commercial piece there, we, you know, we have, like I said, it's, it's like an L shape. We have limited frontage on there. So, like, trying to get like a, a standard commercial use there is going to be very difficult. Um, our- Our, our, as you can see, the road frontage is, is, is small, whereas it kind of bumps, uh, back behind there. So like traditional commercial, uh, is gonna be, you know, difficult, um, to do. You know, the PDD over there, the, the old PDD master plan, you know, contemplated, you know, short little, uh, boxes there that, you know, just, there's not much substance to it, you know? It's really not viable, uh, if, if we're doing that. You know, the other thing is that plan shows street front and commercial, and, you know, we're not doing street front and commercial Wire Road. You know, that's a suburban corridor, uh, and, you know, everything out there is off the road. So, you know what I mean, it just, it doesn't really work too well for commercial layout. But just wanted to bring up those two things.
The underlying zoning is a CDD, right? So this should, so why couldn't you approve this without changing that PDD? I mean, you should be able to, right? It's still, this is still a, a, a use that's allowable under CDD.
Conditional, it's a, requires a conditional use.
Yeah, so we, you know, we could.
This is what the request is for conditional use. So it could be approved and still done if it's, if the PDD pullout is denied.
So we, so we deny it, well.
Well, that was the question I was asking.
Right. Do we have a firm answer to the question?
Logan, do you wanna?
Yeah, so a multi-unit development as part of a PDD does not require conditional use approval.
Right.
However, it would trigger a PDD amendment because they've now switched from commer-, you know, changed uses on the plan.
Okay. So if we approve the conditional use. He's still gonna come in for a PDD amendment?
If it's denied, yes.
Yeah, if, if.
So Logan, I, I think what you're saying is, if for some reason the, um, the PDD, pulling it out of the PDD was to be denied, but the conditional use is approved, they would need to come back later to amend the PDD to allow, essentially to allow it to have the multi-unit, to make that change for the multi-unit, um, development.
Yes, that would constitute a significant change in the master development plan.
But I think that would give, if y'all were on board with the conditional use, right? If, if, if we, if, I'm just saying, just hear me out there, if you did approve the conditional use, but you denied the zoning, right? Then we make the choice of, do we take this to city council with a denial on that and approval on this? Or do I file to read, to pull, to expand the PDD, to pull it in and hold the conditional use? And then make them come together, you see what I'm saying? So it kind of gives us a, it, it would give us options, if you're good with the use, you know what I mean? If you're not good with the use, then.
Well, for me, conditional use, my, my vote for denial was based on the fact that I thought this was more appropriate, commercial. And so this is not commercial, so I, you know, that's just.
Suggested use. What about mixed use? I mean, mixed commercial and, um, and residential?
So, one of the things when we talked staff, we went to two staff pre-development meetings on this one, not one. And like Brett said, he alluded to, uh, where's your curb cut gonna be, right? That close to the intersection. There's a turn lane in from south to north going into Haley Lane. And there's a turn lane in coming from north to south, coming into Haley Lane. And that's great, there's not gonna be a lot of density down there because it's all floodplain, right? So you don't have that concern of traffic. When we were talking to the engineering department, Allison Roy, we, um. But, um, there's a curb cut, this used to be one piece of property and they subdivided the, the part with the trailer out, the vacant part along Wire Road, that's still in the county. There's a curb cut right there that originally was taken out and, but it had been deeded in, so the previous landowners had to work with the city. And city staff told me about this, they had to put that curb cut back in, but that's not on our property. So they didn't want it, they, they didn't think it was a wise move to put a curb cut right there, ten feet from the other curb cut that would now be on our property. So, uh, I'd heard a comment earlier about ingress egress, not here, but, uh, a couple of days ago, just talking about it. You know, we've got, we've got everything coming into Haley Lane, uh, and then one ingress egress. And we matched it up with the, uh, business across the street, so it would be a good, as from a civil engineering standpoint, that's a good design. But, but, you know, if we had the whole piece of property, if it was still the full three acres or three and a half acres or whatever, it would probably make sense to do commercial. But just from a safety traffic flow, we feel like this is the best way to go. And then we did market studies and stuff, there is a ton of commercial coming up in that street, a ton. Buck Starr owns property directly across the street, down, like we said, down at the corner. The gentleman from Atlanta that's developing the fifty-five plus, he just bought Swan's trailer park. All of that, I've been told, you know, obviously it hasn't come to y'all yet, but that all, you know, they're, they're anticipating commercial all up and down there. So this is a very clean development, it's high-end, uh, single-family houses and I just, we spent months and months designing this and the land flows perfectly to the detention pond and where the stormwater sewer system is. The sewer is perfect for everything, has tons of capacity to handle this. You're not talking about that many, you know, total people out there. We just, it's light years ahead of trail parks and stuff like that. I mean, I'm just being honest, this is the stuff we want. This is the high-quality development that we've been begging for. And then we, you know, get beat up on the way to get it done, but, but, you know, this is a really, really good design and it's, I think it's a lot better than what could be here if somebody else did it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, do we need any discussion on, among the board? Or is someone prepared to make a motion?
I move to approve CU twenty twenty-three zero zero nine, recommend to city council approval.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we forward to city council a recommendation for approval. Let's, uh, have a roll call vote, please.
Robin Bridges?
Yes.
Phil Chancellor?
No.
Da- David Wisdom?
Yes.
Warren McCord?
No.
Nonette Reese?
Yes.
Bob Writtenbaugh?
No.
Usual subjects.
Well, it's same as the last one. Okay, moving right along. To the preserve.
The applicant has requested that you postpone this application until your May meeting.
I'll need a motion on that, if the petitioner has requested that we postpone that to a date certain, which would be.
What date is that?
It'll be May eleventh.
I move to postpone to date certain of May the eleventh, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that we postpone to May eleventh, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Post is carried, no's, no no's, okay. Does he make the same request for the, the, uh? The next one? No?
No.
No.
Oh, shoot.
All right.
All right, this is a request for a preliminary plat approval of a performance subdivision, of which they're subdividing twenty-six point eight zero acres into forty-nine lots. Property is located at the western terminus of Sequoia Drive and Redtail Lane, Redtail Lane. There's the plat there, the preliminary plat meets the previously approved master development plan that was approved previously in, uh, twenty seventeen. And upon addressing staff comments, uh, staff recommends approval with comments.
Are there any comments of note?
Uh, mostly notational, um, and just that no construction will begin until a development agreement has been updated.
That was the big one, I knew there was something.
All right, does the developer have anything to say to this? Okay, um, this requires a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes, from the public, who wish to address this item? I see no one, so we will close the public hearing and, uh.
I'll move to approve, uh, PC case PP twenty twenty-three zero zero six, preserve phase four C six B. Eliminating plat.
Oh, thank you.
With comments?
With comments.
With comments.
All right, the motion's been made and seconded that it be rec, uh, that it be approved, uh, subject to meeting all the comments, comments in the staff report. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and that motion carries. Okay, Mill Creek Data Center.
Yes, that is correct, this is a request for conditional use approval of a, um, commercial sport use, uh, data center to be located at four oh-six West Veterans Boulevard in the CDD zoning district. They are proposing a sixty-five thousand square foot building for a data center. And with this request, they are also asking for a waiver to the corridor overlay requirements for fences, a fence, um, on a corridor street cannot be located front of the forward plane of the, forward of the front plane of the building, and it cannot exceed four feet in height. As you can imagine, data centers are very secure facilities. And there will be, um, fences all around from the drive here. There is a security kiosk in this location here and then a sliding gate here. And the fence is all around the building. And I don't believe there is a fence over here, there may be. But with the distance, the building is set back from the street, it's over four hundred feet, I believe. You may not see the, the fence. And it's, it will be an ornamental steel structure and not chain link, so we do recommend approval of the waiver.
It's undisturbed, um, vegetation, like all the way from the street to the building practically, right?
That is correct, the, the dashed line here is the, um, disturbed area. So the surrounding area will be, um, undisturbed.
So you won't be able to see it from the street anyway?
Correct.
Basically.
How do I go backwards? Sorry, I am the world's worst with this. Okay, uh, we do recommend approval. We did not receive any correspondence from any of the adjoining property owners and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
And the applicant's representative does.
Would they like to address this in any way? No?
Just, just there to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I believe this does require a public hearing and we will open that public hearing now if there's anyone wish to discuss this issue before the board. And I see no one, so we'll close the public hearing.
If they're. Move to approve, uh, CU twenty twenty-three zero zero four, Mill Creek Data Center, conditional use.
With the waiver.
With the waiver included.
Include the waiver.
Right.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded that it be recommended for approval with the waiver to the city council. And all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no, and it is approved. Uh, next is the conditional use request from Delta Development Group, Spring Lake.
All right, this, uh, request is to amend the list of approved uses for the Spring Lake, uh, PDD. Uh, when a PDD is approved, a lot of times a, uh, developer will get a, a list of uses that they think might go into that development, um, not necessarily knowing or having an act, an exact tenant in mind at that time. In this case, they'd like to add several uses to that PDD. Group hub, harbor stores, hotel motel, condo tell, package store, indoor flight facility and ATMs, car wash, detailing shop and gas station. The property is located, uh, at the, uh, easternmost part of town on the border with, uh, the city of Opelika. And, um, staff, they have provided this updated master development plan that shows some of those uses and kind of how it would look. It's essentially unchanged from the existing PDD, it's really just a, an update to that, that plan. Staff recommends approval of the amended list, uh, with one condition, and that is to remove those road service uses, the gas station, car wash and, uh, ATMs. Uh, and ATMs being standalone ATM, uh, not one inside of the building. Other than that, staff recommends approval with that one condition and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, does the petitioner wish to address this, yes?
Uh, Dale Spivey, my wife and I are the master developer of this project. And, um, as you can tell, we did, I think, what we told you we were gonna do, do a nice apartment complex. I think we achieved that, I think we have the nicest complex in town, bar none. We definitely spent the most money. I can say that for sure. We're now at the point where we were under, um, restrictions, we sold the apartment site off already. We're under restrictions with them that we couldn't develop the, uh, retail until the apartments were finished. And, uh, they needed our land for construction entrance, um, staging. So we're now at the, finally, after seven or eight years, we're finally at the point where we're ready to sell our retail. And we need to sell our retail, this is our profit margin for the entire project. This has been a very, uh, long project and a, uh, very costly project.
I recall y'all weren't too happy about building the commercial when we, when you had the proposal here.
Originally we was not going to, uh, we mainly wanted to do apartments with a small amount of retail. And we were denied that, so we revised the, uh, the plan and, uh, added, hadn't hurt the plan at all. We still were able to get the number of units that we had originally planned to get on there, hadn't hurt the project at all. So now we do have the retail that's gonna work out well for us. Uh, I, I, actually it's gonna work out better for us, because now we have the retail that's gonna actually bring more than anything else we could possibly do. We have, I'll go ahead and tell you, the, the retail is extremely pricey. And we have a tremendous amount of money, as David Slokum can tell you in site work, we've already, this thing is already completely, uh, ready to build on. Detention ponds are built, uh, sewage is, is already to the site, uh, I mean, it's, it's completely finished. I do have, um, two questions about the denial of the gas station and the ATM. Is, um, you can't really see it on there, but the, the portion that, uh.
Logan actually has the.
Yeah, that's a better, that's a better picture. On the portion that's the four acre site where we, um, we have in, uh, a lot of interest in the hotel. Have several people that I think will write there, that's a great spot for a hotel. Our issue is, is one of the reasons it took us so long to pull this project off is, unfortunately Kinder Morgan owns, uh, a gas line easement that goes diagonal through that property. And they are something else to work with, I'm just telling you. You'll make multiple trips and multiple phone calls to Birmingham to work with those guys. We tried to move that gas line, we could not move that gas line. To move it a short distance, they were at a million and a half dollars to move it to the, to the edge of the property. So it just didn't make sense to move the, get the gas line, so we're having to work around that gas line. The only reason we're asking, uh, for lenience on the ATM is, uh, two reasons. One, we were already approved for a bank, uh, which has already showed interest in the three acre site. And obviously they're gonna have an ATM if they put a bank there. They're not gonna put a bank there unless they have an ATM, that's just the way it happens in today's world. You don't, I don't know of any bank that doesn't have an ATM. But if a bank doesn't go there, um, we already have interest in, from another party for that site. And that party is interested in doing something that, I don't know of any place in Columbus, I mean, in Auburn, sorry, I'm from Columbus, um, in that site, um, to do a mini-mart. Sort of an upscale convenience store, a better name for it. But he, they have more products, um, but he's only willing to look at that site with gasoline. My only question is about the gasoline is, I understand we don't wanna overdo the gasoline stations. But around the corner, the Sam's, I get that, you gotta be, that's a membership-based gasoline place. So unless you're a Sam's member. So, unless you're a Sam's member, that one completely is out of play. Uh, there are, there are two other stations there, um, in the area. One's on Bank Creek, one's on East Glen. I don't think it would overload it. We're gonna totally lose that customer. And I think a, a mini mart on that site would be a great thing for the, um, basically five hundred people that live in those apartments are in. I mean, they would just be, it would be so easy just to, just to go up to a mini mart, but I hate to lose the mini mart, because we're not gonna allow the fuel. So, I ask for some lenience on that.
Is it more like an IGA instead of like a Circle K gas station, kinda?
Yes, it's, it's totally upscale. Um, there's, there's nothing like it here. It's, they're, they're larger. Um, they're really called mini marts, they're not called convenience stores. Um, I think there's no such thing as a mini.
Pumps be in the back of it or in the front up on by the street?
The, the pumps would be on the front, mini mart would be on the, on the back.
I mean, that's something that would come before us.
That's just typical.
Yeah, it's gotta come for us, but that's what he's...
Yeah.
We've got that.
We are under, we are gonna have very strict restrictions, because the Woodruff Company that purchased the apartments from us, they can only, um, they will only allow certain things on that property, because the apartments is looking at the backside of the buildings. So this is not gonna be the typical, uh, Circle K. This is gonna be an upscale Albrig on all four sides. Uh, the back will be just as finished as the front. So, uh, it'll be a very upscale market with fuel. That's one request, is, uh, consideration for, um, for that. We, like I say, I have a highly interested party in that. Um, on the ATM, the reason we're asking for lenience on, on that is where Kinder Morgan's gas line goes through, it sorta cuts the property, and there's a very small piece of property that there's just hardly anything that's gonna go there. And we're gonna, as much money as we have in this site work and bringing all the utilities in and everything, um, there's, there's hardly anything that we can put on that small piece of property, but an ATM would be a possibility there. Um, and on the other side, this three acres where we're talking about the, the mini mart, um, and the fuel, uh, we do have a bank that's also we're negotiating with on that site, which is already on the approval list. So, uh, I think we're only asking for two things, is leniency on the, uh, first standing ATM and the possibility of, um, a mini mart with fuel.
What is that little piece of property? You don't have the click... Has...
I don't have the pointer.
It's cut off by the...
Exactly.
By the gas line.
Um, it's right, right about where they're pointing that now.
That's the gas line.
That's the gas line. And it's two gas lines. It's not just one gas line. It's two main gas lines.
One rideaway.
Yeah, and they have an easement on both sides of forty-five feet. So it takes up an incredible amount of space, and the only thing you can put on it is parking. So the only thing we're, that we have a small possibility of is, is a, a very small building. I think one thing that would be a possibility there, I mean, we're not necessarily pressing and looking for an ATM. We're just looking for possibilities. What I'd like to see go there is, um, a Starbucks. Uh, that's why we chose the Woodruff Company out of, um, Columbus. They rent to three Starbucks, so we're contacting Starbucks now. That would just be a incredible place for Starbucks. All those renters coming and going in the mornings, we feel like that would be the best thing. I would even build them the building and rent it back to them. Uh, that's how strongly I feel about that one. So, we're just looking for possibilities. We just don't wanna close ourselves in. Um, we re, we, you know, it's, we, we've held this for a long time, and, uh, we just need to sell this project and move on to the next Auburn project.
One in this list that still bothers me is the, the wash, car wash.
Oh, we had, we're not gonna allow that anyway.
Okay, let's cross that off.
We can just take that off the list. That was a possibility that the Woodruff Company brought up, and when Teresa and I heard that, we were like, nah, we're not gonna allow a car wash to go here. So, that was never, to be honest with you, that was never a possibility. What else was, what else was denied on that list?
Just those three?
Well, yeah.
Road services, well, is there more road services than those three?
The ATMs, the gasoline service station, and the, and the detail.
Those were the three that were road service uses that were requested.
There are other...
We're only asking for two things, just the ATM and the possibility of a, a mini mart with the fuel.
See, there are other road uses though, right?
That were previously approved, um, so...
Oh, that are already okay?
That are already okay, yes.
Just these three in particular, okay, gotcha.
And just to clarify, the ATM, uh, a, a bank with an ATM drive-through is different than a standalone ATM.
Right.
We're only asking for that just because of that very small piece of property that there's hardly anything gonna fit on.
Okay. Hey, uh, let's see, I guess it's time to open a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishes to, uh, ask questions or, or address this issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing and continue the discussion with, with the commission. The, uh, let me ask a question if I may, Kevin. Having to do with, uh, the fueling station or the, the convenience store with, with fuel. Uh, do we have an opportunity to negotiate how that, under the, at least the DTR, uh, DRT? In other words, we've had good success on major corridors in one or two places where they agreed to put the pumps on the back of the building and, uh, make the, the, the building itself that faces the main drag look more like a regular commercial building. Is that a po- possibility?
From, from our standpoint, that wouldn't be something, I'll say, we could really negotiate a staff for, from a, from, in the, in the DRT process. Certainly, we could, you know, encourage the applicant to do that, and, and, you know, we always encourage quality design and everything, um, within, within the city of Auburn. But, you know, I think that, um, while they don't have a site plan now, if it, this is a use that you may consider.
Oh, yeah.
Um, maybe this is something where they could bring back a site plan at a later date for the plan and commission.
Well, wouldn't they have to do that with the u... Once, once we, if we approve all this, the, you know, with, including the road services, that, we're not gonna see it again in terms, that's gonna be, they're gonna do that gas station by right after that. I mean, that, that's the end of it. They don't come back for us.
Correct, unless there would be a, somehow a significant change to the PDD with, which, how this is layout, laid out, I really don't foresee there being a major change.
Can we make a recommendation now?
You can, you can condition and approve of this request such that if a gas station is allowed, it would have to come back as a, with a site plan, conditional use.
You know, I, I'm well aware that this is our last piece of commercial before you enter other territory, other jurisdictions. So I, you know, I don't want to create any unintentional leakages. But, uh, I just hope and want that ser- uh, service station, convenience store to look as good as the apartments do. On that, that stretch.
Well, that's one of the conditions that, uh, that the Woodruff Company is gonna require. There's no way they're gonna allow that, 'cause they have total control of what we put on that site. Uh, that was determined when we sold the, the property to them.
That they would approve design, all design?
They have total control of design approval. So, they're not gonna allow anything that's not upscale. That's why we have, every building will be fin- uh, pre-finished on all four sides.
Well, the, the, the canopies are what the, everybody sees from down the road, so...
And that's why the, the idea of putting them on the back of the building, Woodruff Company's never gonna go for that.
Yeah, okay, it'd be facing their, facing their building. Let the rest of us look at it, okay.
I'll be, I'll be honest, our preference for that piece of property is a high-end restaurant. But that piece of property, we've got it marketed at two point eight-four million. There's not many restaurants that's gonna give me two point eight-four million and put a three or four million dollar restaurant on it. It's probably not gonna happen. Um, what I'd like to see there is, it, it's an upscale restaurant.
Okay.
But we gotta be practical at the same time, work through, you know, we've learned, just out spending money for no reason today. It's, it's, it's a little tougher than it was three or four years ago.
Alright, thank you. Alright, uh, does anybody have any more questions, or someone prepared to make a motion?
I would like to move to approve CU twenty-two-three zero-zero-five with road service uses excluding car wash detailing shop. And with conditions from staff.
Okay, you understand the, the motion? You have a second? The motion is for approval with the exception of, uh, one road service use, which is the car wash. And all staff comments.
Well, it can't be all staff comments, because one of the staff comments is road service used to denial.
Yeah, well, yeah. But, that, etc. Okay, we have a motion. Is, is there...
I've seconded.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
And all opposed, say no, and the motion carries. Okay, now we're all, gotta deal with ourselves here. The zoning text amendment.
That is correct.
We asked for it.
This is the, um, zoning ordinance text amendment to create the ICD, which is the Interstate Commercial Zoning District. Um, this was initially brought to you guys back in two thousand fifteen. Um, when the STCD went through. However, the ICD was put on hold at that time. And with more commercial, um, or more properties developing along exit fifty, um, we felt it was a very important time to bring this back to you guys, so we can preserve our primary entrances around the interchanges as commercial property. And this will be a commercial-only zone, which is very important for preserving that area.
No mixed uses.
You're sorry?
No mixed uses in there.
Correct.
Mix of commercial uses.
Commercial only.
Clarity.
That is right. Um, in your, in your, um, packets, you will see the table of permitted uses. Uh, most of those are very similar to, um, the uses allowed in STCD. No residential uses are allowed. Um, more intense uses such as commercial support uses, agricultural uses are also prohibited. Most other commercial uses are allowed by right. And of course, we recommend approval.
Oh, although the agenda does not indicate, so indicate, but I, I believe most ordinance changes require a public hearing.
Yes.
It sure does.
So, I shall open that public hearing. If anyone wants to ask questions as to this particular zoning change, we'll be glad to hear them. If not, we'll close the public hearing and, uh, entertain motion or discussion.
Move to approve, uh, ZT twenty-two-three zero-zero-one Interstate Commercial District Ordinance Text Amendment.
Is there a second?
Second.
Right, a second. Any discussion of the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say no, and the motion carries. Now we deal with...
Thank you for all your work.
I'm sorry?
Thank you for all your work on that.
Oh, you were very welcome. Uh, this second to last item of the evening is the zoning map amendment for changing one property to the newly created ICD zoning district. Property is at exit fifty on the west side of Cox Road, and it is currently CDD. And we are proposing a map change of ICD.
I've also known, I've had several conversations with other surrounding property owners as well, so I anticipate in the coming months, you may see some other requests, um, with this as well, and not to pat ourselves on the back, but I think that there's been a lot of interest in this from the property owners as they market their properties to be able to get a lot of these uses by right.
Clarity, yes, yes, okay, thank you. Uh, this also, uh, would think would require a public hearing. Is anybody wish to address the council on this right now, commission on this? I see no one. We'll close that public hearing and, uh, discuss or entertain a motion.
This will be put on the future land use map eventually, right, this whole area?
The future land use is not changing at this time.
It's not gonna incorporate ICD at all.
No, it already has.
Oh, it did.
So the future land use for this area is interstate commercial, so this will actually match up perfectly with what's actually...
We didn't create the zone, we put it on the map, but we didn't create the zone.
Correct, we're just filling that in.
To implement it, okay.
Great question, though.
Move to approve twenty-two-three zero-zero-two, second.
Alright, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, any opposed, say no, and the motion carries. Now we have one more.
One more?
Alright, Skybar Waiver.
Yes, sir, this is a, uh, waiver request to the zoning ordinance for a, uh, architectural standard that we have in downtown, uh, specifically in the urban core district. Uh, it's in table five dash three, and specifically, it deals with, uh, fenestration. And so, uh, this architectural standard is basically that if you have a, um, facade on a ground story, a certain percentage of that facade needs to have openings or windows in it. And the, uh, intent of that is basically, so if you're pedestrian walking or even driving by, you're not looking at just a blank wall. Um, we're trying to create spaces that are inviting, that are more walkable. So that is kind of the intent behind the regulation. The applicant is requesting, or they have a permit and it's currently under construction for basically this, uh, half of the building as an addition. Um, they have built out essentially the openings, but would like to close them in. Um, that would, uh, reduce the amount of openings and fenestration to less than what is required. And here's some pictures of those openings and kind of what they would like to do. The applicant has stated the intent of this is to prevent any nuisances, noises, things like that, uh, from spilling out over into the street. However, staff feels that the, uh, waiver request should be denied, um, as it kind of really limits that, um, facade and, as I mentioned, kind of makes it just a long blank wall. I have to answer any questions you might have, and the applicant is here.
Okay, thank you, Logan. Is the applicant, uh, does the applicant wish to speak to it?
Yes, sir. I'm Daniel Reuter. Um, there's three different reasons why we think it would be beneficial to have it be an actual wall versus windows. If you're actually, if you're a customer on the inside, there's a huge dumpster that the city put there. And so, all the windows that would technically be there, you're, you're, you have five feet before you look at a wall. There's, there's, you can't see it from the road, from anybody driving by. Also, it'll be a little bit more open, so the sound from the, the building itself, if you're gonna build a hotel next door, which is in the plans, we don't wanna have any noise, you know, any extra noise, so we feel like an acoustic wall would help alleviate that. So, between the, the view from the outside that you can't see it, and the fact that, I mean, the customers are, are looking at a dump, where everybody dumps all their trash, um, you know, and the, and the possibility of having additional noise, we prefer to actually have it be a, a full wall versus being just windows. So...
Thank you. Any questions? No?
That's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, is someone else? Yes, come on.
Randy Smith, I'm in the building. It won't look like that, because I just wanna reiterate, there's a huge dumpster sitting in front of it. You look at the drawing, it looks beautiful, but you may be only able to see one window on the right side without the dumpster obscuring the rest of those windows.
Okay. Alright.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh. I don't think a waiver request requires a hearing. Uh, so, let's discuss that. Let me ask a question. I can understand noise, uh, being, uh, somewhat mitigated with, with a solid wall versus these openings. What other, what other ways, uh, do you, uh, noise is often a bit of complaint from that part of town? Uh, here. Live, don't you have live music sometime?
We have live music and music.
And does that live music end at a certain parti- uh, time of the evening?
It follows the city guidelines at two o'clock or two thirty.
Yeah, two o'clock, that's what I thought. Uh, we're talking about a hotel downtown nearby? What is other noise mitigation can we do? We can't, okay.
But certain...
It says, didn't we say somewhere that there are other...
Yeah, the fenestration doesn't have to be open. It just has to be windows, or it doesn't have to be open.
That's correct. It, it, it doesn't have to be open air, it can be, uh, window treatments, it can be, um, anything that's... basically transparent.
Transparent, but thick, I suppose.
I feel like I learned a lot about that in the DDRT meetings.
Okay. All right, well, any other?
Yeah, I've got a question. Who, so, what's up with the dumpster? Is that...
So, yeah.
I mean, is that, is that a permanent situation, or is that because of all the construction going on, or...
Permanent for, for now. I mean, I don't know how long, ten years, twenty years, it may, it may not be there anymore, but the, the building will be. And so, but the other side of this is that there is a sidewalk right next door in between the compactor and the facade. And if you go out there today, there's just tons of people going back and forth, up and down Wright Street on that sidewalk.
And when we talk about calculating the, you know, the criteria for the fenestration, are we looking at that entire block there, that whole... We look at the whole building, because this is an addition. We're not, we're, we're looking in the context of the whole building.
Yeah, so in your staff report, there's two calculations. There's one for the fenestration for the whole building, and there's one for the new portion. But how that's calculated is the, is the square foot area of each opening divided by the square foot of the whole facade at that ground level.
So for this particular section, I believe, kind of as it was, the fenestration was just over thirty percent, and obviously, this would go to nearly zero now. And for that entire Wright Street facade, it's around thirty-three percent, and that would be fully reduced to about twenty percent.
And the requirement is?
Fifty percent.
The current requirement is fifty percent. When this was reviewed, it was thirty percent.
Yeah, because we did change it fairly recently.
Now, this picture we have here in, in the packet indicates that this is below grade or half of it is below grade?
No, this is at grade. Basically, they have a scaffolding up.
Yeah.
And you can kind of...
Like a brick wall.
I think that's the...
Looks like a brick wall.
That's just a...
That's the compactor enclosure on the other side of the sidewalk.
Oh. Fancy.
So, oh, so you can walk between the buildings?
I told you.
I thought it was underground. I was like, what is happening?
So what it, now, it's not below grade?
It is not, no.
It's an sidewalk in between this wall and that wall.
Oh. Oh.
So that would really close you off.
Yeah, sure would.
It's horrible.
All right, any, any more discussion? Anyone wish to make a motion?
I will recommend WZ twenty twenty-three zero zero one for denial.
Motion's been made for denial. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Now, I might explain, the denial is merely closing all of the fenestration.
Correct.
Correct. Still have some open, or, or some or all of them can be open.
Right, or with glass.
Correct.
Glass.
Yes.
Or some other plexiglass or whatever, okay. All right, so the motion's been made for denial and seconded. Is there any further discussion of the motion? And all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. And the motion carries. And it brings us to the end. The chairman has no communication. Any staff communication?